I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Troy, regular scheduled meeting of the Troy Board of Education on this Monday, September 9th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Borchers?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Fox? Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Reddick?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a moment of silence for Beverly Rigan, who passed away on Tuesday, August 20th at the age of 76. She worked for many years in the Troy High School cafeteria. Thank you. Next, we have some presentations, Board Committees. Teresa, the Upper Valley?
Sure. We had our meeting on August 26th. And they do a spotlight, just like we do with bringing students from our schools. They also bring in a spotlight from their programs. The spotlight was on their adult education program. They have quite a few programs. And a lot of it is helping adults kind of change their path and find either a new path for career certification, a new path for employment. So that was, it's just a very, and they focus a lot on positive mindset as these adults are coming through their programs as well. So that was interesting to hear about. It's a lot of, a lot of what employers are looking for. Yes, the skills, but also what is your mindset coming into the, into the company? They do a lot on skill and professionalism. They actually have classes that talk about what is that professionalism when you're going out into the corporate environment? They also do a Germany Exchange Program. So in October, there will be families from Upper Valley hosting German Exchange students. And then in March, some of those Upper Valley students will travel to Germany to meet up with those same families. It's a really, it's a really interesting program. I, I don't know how many years it's been going on, but it's been going on for quite a few years. It's been a successful program.
Oh, nice. Okay. There was a board meeting for the Troy Hayner on August 15th. The Hayner is currently, the exhibit currently at the Hayner is the Wild and Whimsical Works by Dawn Babylon. She was a homeschool, or is, a homeschool art instructor, and she volunteers on the Hayner. So she will be a full-time art instructor at Troy Christian this year, and the exhibit runs through August 25th. I guess that's already passed, so that was what was there. Next is Charles Wright. His exhibit is entitled Recent Works and runs from August 30th to October 6th. Also, the Troy Porch Fest is going on, on September 14th. If any of you have never attended, it's a lot of fun. There are bands on different folks' porches and just a large variety. It's a lot of fun, just walking around Troy. They have a map, so you can see there's a lot of places that they have bands, and then they also have a lot of folks, like on Main Street and other places that you can also enjoy as well. So I encourage everybody to attend. And it's hard to believe, but we're going to be celebrating America's 250th celebration in 2026. So they're already starting the planning for that. So stay tuned. There will be a lot. And Hayner will be celebrating its 50th the same year. So there will be a lot of activities around that. So stay tuned for that. All right. Next, we have student leadership opportunities within school-based activities, Van Cleve.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you on behalf of Van Cleve School. I'm Mr. Saddle, the principal. And I want to thank you all for the invitation to present again this year. Again, once again this year, our focus will be on part of the strategic plan, which is to have 100% of our students from grade seven through 12 actively connected to activities or opportunities at the school level. But that can't begin at just seventh grade to achieve such a lofty goal. It needs to begin at sixth grade. So last year, we were able to present with you about our after-school initiatives. We talked about the Lincoln Center, Troy Miami County Public Library, Reading for Change, Hayner, the REC, all those organizations that support our students after school. This year, we've added a new after-school partner, which is The Clubhouse, which is a United Way-funded agency, New Kingsburg Church. They are a student partner with us as well. But this year, Mrs. Kalis is going to feature and talk about the school-based programs that we have to get our students engaged and connected in order to help reach that lofty goal of 100% participation in extracurricular activities. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Kalis.
Some of our Van Cleve school-based activities include Future Riggins Today, Homework Helper, Safety Patrol, The Flag Honor Guard, Morning Announcement, Student Council, Band and Orchestra. And as of 2:00 today, we have 162 students already signed up for one of those activities, and not all of our activities have begun yet. So we expect that number to increase. So we have students with us today that are going to speak on the activity or the club they are interested in. Kayden, I'll let you begin.
Hello, my name is Kayden Millsat, and I would love to do band because I would love to do the clarinet, and I would love to be the first one in my family to do band.
Hi, my name is Armani Steele. I'm interested in joining band and playing the baritone because my mom and my brother weren't in it, and I love music.
Hi, my name is Eevee Swiger. I am interested in doing, joining orchestra because I want to be a viola.
Hi, my name is Talia from K, and I'm interested in doing student council, and I want to be a student council member because I have really good leadership.
Hi, my name is Alexis Dunky, and I'm interested in doing morning announcements because I would like to just give facts about the party.
Hi, my name is Mia Marilla, and I'm interested in doing band and playing the saxophone because I always wanted to play an instrument, and I love music.
Hi, my name is Kane Stone. I'm interested in doing morning announcements because I think it would be nice to learn people's names.
Hi, my name is Danny Krueger. I would like to join Safety Patrols because I love helping.
Hi, my name is Zizi King. I'm interested in doing Safety Patrol and orchestra, and I want to play the viola.
That is very awesome that you all are stepping up and getting engaged. I played the baritone in the band. Great choice. All the activities that you're going in, I'm glad to see that you are participating and starting on 160. Wow. And you're only half, how many weeks are we? Not very many. Good job. Encourage your fellow students to also get engaged. Does anybody have questions with them? Otherwise, one of the things we do is retell us your name and then tell us who you brought with us, with you. We like to see who's in this wonderful audience out there.
Hello, my name is Kayden Millsat, and I brought my dad and mom.
And raise your hands, dad and mom. All right.
Hi, my name is Armani Steele, and I brought my grandma and my mom.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Eevee Swiger. I brought my mom and friend and her friend.
Great.
My name is Talia from K, and I brought my mom, my girlfriend, my great-grandma, and my banana.
Cool.
Hi, my name is Alexis Dunky, and I brought my mom, my dad, and my brother.
Hi, my name is Mia Marilla, and I brought my mom.
Hi, my name is Kane Stone. I brought my grandpa.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Danny Krueger. I brought my mom and my dad.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Zizi King. I brought my dad.
Wow. I know it's, it's taken a lot for you to take time out of your very, very busy schedules and come and see us, and we really do appreciate. This is our favorite time of the meeting, actually. So we're really glad you came. And parents, thank you for bringing your children. You must be very proud. They have done an amazing job. And hopefully, you're enjoying this beautiful facility and knowing that next year you get to come and enjoy this. This was just renovated this past summer, and this library, and I'm just so proud of what they've come. It's a great facility.
I do have a question. I'm curious to hear from our boys and girls here if you had an idea that you wanted to be a part of this before this school year started, or did you discover this opportunity this year? I'm just curious. Do you just want to go down the line?
Hello, my name is Kayden Millsat, and I did not know, but I would, I did not want to.
Yeah, good.
My name is Armani Steele, and I was like iffy about it. I didn't know if I wanted to or if I didn't want to.
You guys kind of saw a presentation last year, like at the high school, right? They kind of got that started for band. Okay, good.
My name is Eevee Swiger. I was interested in doing orchestra.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Now, wait, before we start, how does the student council get elected? Is that how you become, or how do you?
Yeah, you sign out.
Were you on student council last year?
So when are the elections soon?
The students just this week are getting their applications, and then they submit those Friday.
Okay.
The lecture process next week begins this Friday, and there's one representative per homeroom.
Okay. Oh, wow. Terrific.
Campaign slogan? We're going to want.
Vote for me, right?
For those interested in band, did you do the, was there a try of your instrument? So was that how you picked the instrument you wanted to do, or did you think about it before?
I thought about it before.
Thought about it before?
Cool.
My name is Alexis Dunky, and I did not know I would be a part of this, so it was a big surprise.
My name is Mia Marilla, and I used to want to do band, but this year I actually got the opportunity to do it, so I want to do it now.
That's cool.
Hi, my name is Kane Steele, and I did not know about morning announcements.
Oh.
Hi, my name is Danny Krueger. I'm a member of the orchestra.
Hi, my name is Zizi King. I did know about.
Did you do it in the past? Did any of you say no? Because you could do that in elementary, I think, for some. You did it in the past? Okay. Yeah. That's cool.
Something unique about our students, who are going to be signing up for multiple activities, like student council and band, so.
Oh, my. So how does band, is it like a period during?
It's the homeroom period.
Oh, homeroom period. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Which is right at the beginning of the day? That's cool. You'll enjoy it. And orchestra, and all those are great programs. Yes. Awesome. Well, thank you all for coming. I'm excited for you. That, yes, you're going to have a great year. I know that you are. And then next year, like I said, you get to come to this beautiful facility and be in the air conditioning, so. And then by the time you go to high school, it'll be air-conditioned. Yay! We're excited for you. So, any other questions for these young adults? If not, thank you for coming. And for the parents, you are welcome to stay, but you don't have to. If you want to exit stage right, that is just fine.
If I step out and take pictures?
Absolutely.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Look how flexible this is.
Good thing everything has, has rollers on it.
So good. See the teamwork?
Right. Until the students figure out how to do it. So when does the chair raises start? That's what I want to know. I know, because when I said, first when I sat down, I was like, woo! Right. Because one day we had a meeting, I sat down, I'm like, my feet hardly touched the floor. They're very, uh... Everybody's vacating? Yes. All right. Moving right along, we have the first hearing of the public for anything that is on the agenda. And Dr. Moore says no. Okay. Next, we have the treasurer's report, consideration for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, August 12th, and the special meeting on Wednesday, September 4th.
Same move.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Comments or questions? If not, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, moving to the financial reports. Attached in Exhibit C is the August 2024 SM2, monthly total revenue, expenditures, ending balance, schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, five-year forecasts, appropriations, and investment. Motion to approve?
Same move.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Mr. Price?
Still busy getting set up and everything entered for fiscal year. The certificate of resources and final appropriations will be presented to you here in a couple more resolutions. However, last month, our benefits more than doubled. So that was a little bit of concern. They have dropped back down the first week claims period so far in September. Hopefully, that will continue. It was just a blip. Most of the overage that did occur in August, we will get back at some point through reinsurance. It was over quite a bit. We have another week. This today.
Was it just a spike in claims?
Yeah. Yeah. Couple of large claims hit over the summer.
I have a question. The five-year forecast, the three-year comparison. In line 3.01, it shows fiscal year '23, a little over $5 million, and '25, $5 million, and fiscal '24 is like $3 million. Did I miss something on that? On personnel services? Or, I don't know. I caught it late, and I didn't really have time to go back through the last one to look, so I probably.
Shall I know?
3.01?
Expenditures, personnel services.
Personnel services, expenditures. Is that a typo?
For last fiscal year?
'20, '24 shows $3 million plus, and '25 and '23 show $5 million plus.
I believe there was a pre-roll that did not get posted. I'd have to go back and double-check to make sure this was the month, but I believe that was the case.
Oh, okay.
It got pushed to a month later last year for it.
Okay. So it was a pretty big difference.
Yeah, they're usually pretty consistent.
Yeah, usually it's very consistent. So that's why I was a little surprised. Okay.
So will it recalibrate for next one?
I can let you know. What's that?
Will it recalibrate next one?
If that is the case, I believe next month, September for that year, will be slightly higher than the other two as a result. So it may take a couple of months.
I'll check. I don't know why it's just going to be that.
I will double-check to make sure that is the case and let y'all know.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Price? If so, will you keep, if not, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mr. Rag?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the 2024 amended certificate of estimated resources and 2025 appropriations in Exhibit D.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
This is an annual resolution. With this month, we're required to finalize appropriations by the end of September. This document, if you compare it to prior years, for the most part, it should be very similar. There's a slight increase for general fund because of the raises that were negotiated last spring. Also, you'll notice too, some new funds that have hit the account listing. And that would be Fund 010, 004, and 034, all associated with the construction project. 004 is mainly LFI dollars associated with the elementary project, along with the dollars necessary to complete the HVAC project at the high school.
That was 034?
004. 010 is only for the new elementary construction dollars. And 034 is the set-aside maintenance for the elementary buildings to be constructed.
Remind me again how the state funds work. Do they?
State funds are based upon a schedule that our OFCC rep, along with our CMR Peterson Construction Group and the district, we have to present information both on a monthly and quarterly basis. Cash requests are then submitted on a quarterly basis in anticipation of what we intend to spend for the upcoming three months.
That's right. So then it comes into us?
That money will come in in segments, get spent down, replenished.
But we, we pay the, we pay the POs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, half of our funds.
We process everything. Basically, it's double entry for us.
Yeah. Just because.
Because we have to enter it into the state system.
Oops.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Price? If not, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the Then and Now, which is the revised code provides that if prior certification of the funds by the fiscal officer is not obtained before the contract or order involving the expenditure of money, then the fiscal officer may instead certify. Motion to approve?
Same move.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
We had one associated with Junior High, one with the athletic department, one for Haywood, and the largest one with HR, but that was due to a vendor change. Until everything was received and set up, we were already behind, so.
Because this would be the first year, right, for, or first month, rather, for benefits to start?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions? Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes. Moving on to the superintendent's report, resolution accepting many wonderful gifts to the Troy City School District and expressing the thanks of the Troy Board of Education. Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. This is a great month.
Yeah, you'll see a very wide variety, from Arby's coupons to backpacks to $50,000, everything between. So, yeah, once again, we're very happy that our community supports our kids, our staff, and our community. In our monthly total, $66,801.24, bringing our fiscal year-to-date to $96,318.39. And we say thank you.
Yeah, major kudos to our Troy Music Boosters. Wow. That's exceptional. They are amazing. I appreciate their support and all they do for our schools. All right. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the improvement, approval of reimbursement in lieu of transportation.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
So this happens this time of year, each year. Reminder that we transport students who do not attend our schools. If they live in our district, we transport them to private schools. And if we find out, we can practically do so. We can offer a payment in lieu of, which is what this is.
Any questions? If not, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes. Next, we have the gifted policy update. That was in Exhibit E, but then we got revised. Thank you, Dr. Moore, for sending the revisions for that.
Thanks for your patience on that, guys. That's, uh, well.
Same move.
Thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Continue.
So that's, that's all me, guys. I should have sent you the one with the highlighted version of the updates additionally. There are many on there, as you guys are aware, or if you're aware. Each year, sometimes our State Department makes recommendations that impact the approved assessment list that we must follow to identify students for give-to-ability and services as well. So I did send out the version with the highlights and the annotated notes on the side. I can go through all those for you, or if you guys think you're okay. But in this case, I don't think it's just the assessments. It's the scores that were adjusted to, to make it possible for more kids to achieve scores, to achieve a giveaway. But I'm going to want to do all the changes or any questions?
I am okay. I found it pretty self-explanatory. Anybody have questions? Nope. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the real estate exchange agreement between the City of Troy, the Troy Board of Park Commissioners, and the Troy City Schools for the property that we will receive from Troy and extend, and receive from the City of Troy in exchange for the property that we will be giving back to the City of Troy. In Exhibit F. Same move. No, thank you, Mrs. Packard.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I'm not sure who wants to cover this, but.
This document should follow very closely to the MOU that the board approved.
It has been a while.
Last summer, early fall.
We did it prior to the election.
Yes. Sometime in that timeframe. Our legal counsel has been in conversation with the City of Troy Legal Counsel. Our legal counsel was okay with this board moving forward before the other two, because we are under a short timeline to have this all finalized and those two properties transferred into our name to allow us to continue with our design and submission phases with OFCC. And it should follow the MOU to the T.
Can you remind me, like, I know the Hook is 3.2 acres and the Cookson is five-ish? What is?
Hook and Cookson is somewhere in the neighborhood of about an acre less than Haywood, Van Cleve, and Kyle.
Okay. Really?
Combined?
Yes.
It's almost over the range.
Yep.
Oh. I was thinking there was more, but I guess Haywood and Kyle are pretty tiny. Okay.
Plus, we need there more than any thing else.
Absolutely. Yes.
So that allows us to continue operation and construct at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, we're, we're on the heels. We need to get that accomplished, so.
But as Jeff pointed out, it's been years in the making.
Yeah, that is true. That is true. All right. Questions? Sorry. If not, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have personnel items in Exhibit G. Mr. Gilbon.
Uh, do we make?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Happy to start off.
Thank you, thank you. Second. Thank you, Mr. Reddick and Mrs. Davis. Now, sorry.
Fairly short month, a few things I do want to highlight. So Carrie Mason, who is the counselor at Cookson, she's announced that she's retiring at the end of the school year. So that'll make 19 years with Troy. Want to thank her for her years of service to the Troy students. Another position.
Another position I wanted to highlight, Zane McDowell. So Zane was a second shift float custodian. And we revived a position that we had previously for grounds maintenance. And really what that position allows us to do, it's seasonal, so it will allow us to have Zane work during the mowing season and allow our maintenance guys to do maintenance work. And what was happening is we were pulling maintenance guys off of the work that they needed to get done and would at times be on a mower all day, sometimes days or weeks, because the mowing season can get pretty busy. So this was a much-needed position. We worked through that actually during negotiations. And so both sides saw that as a need. We were able to post that as such and kind of got creative on what the schedule looks like again. So for the winter months, that position isn't as needed. So that, it's still a year-round position, but has a shorter number of days, so that they have some time off during winter, if that makes sense. But that's a very positive thing for the district. Kirsten Kramer requesting an unpaid child rearing leave of absence. And as Dr. Moore likes to say, that is good for business. So we approve that. And then just a few other things at the bottom in terms of employment. We were pretty fortunate with our recent hires. We, so for many of our educational aid positions, we wait and post those until late in the summer because most of those are positions that don't have benefits. And what we have found is if you post those too soon, people continue to look for positions with benefits as opposed to if you posted closer for the start of the year, you're more likely to have them actually stay with you. And very happy with our crop of educational aids and new behavioral support assistants. A couple of them actually come with some teaching background, mostly in the preschool-type settings, but feel very, very confident in that group and I'm excited to have them join us. And then the last thing I'll point out is under supplemental contracts, you'll notice a lot of mentors there. Those are for our new teachers, so it's, that's something that we work with Miami County ESC. There's a RESA program that's for all of our new teachers, and so they are given a mentor now for the first two years and then a facilitator for the next two years. And that's just a person that they can lean on, help guide them through the process of transitioning to their full license, the submission of videos and things that they have to take care of. So it's a fairly rigorous process to become a teacher here in the state of Ohio. And so we're pretty thankful for these mentor teachers who are willing to do that, and they receive a stipend for doing that work, so I think that's it.
And they are normally in the same school, I assume?
We try to, yeah. We actually are making a change for one more member this year because the teacher actually switched schools from the first year to the second. So we have an open position. So that means we shifted and we're changing mentors, but yeah, try to be in the same school or at the high school or junior high, even within the same department, if possible.
Awesome.
I applied for this sandbox just a minute ago.
Yep.
In the supplementals, there's two things I'd like to point out. One is at Troy Junior High, Matt Stickles listed as Hyper Bowl Club. We've got a provision in the contract that allows for supplementals to be formed based on student interest and pilot time periods as well. And that is an academic quiz team. And we have interest in kids in this building participating in junior high academic quiz team things. And also down below under special supplementals, Amanda Greer is listed as Lego League Challenge, which is pretty heavy on the science and robotics and pre-engineering type skills. And I really like it, and we are able to add things that, as Mr. Sadler mentioned, one of our strategic goals is about kids getting involved in clubs and activities. And these are academic clubs, and I think sometimes we want to make sure that students have interest in those areas as well. So the system worked, the process worked. I can't wait to see how those kids do in these activities, so.
So we have an academic quiz team in high school, right?
Absolutely. Steve Becker's the advisor. They've had a good...
They've had a great run.
Two-time defending MVO champions.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
First team in school history to win any sort of league or conference title. Happened last, or two years ago, and then they wanted to get, had to get further league.
And this is the feeder, so the junior high team is a feeder.
That's awesome. That's great. That's cool. Wonderful.
And Amanda Greer has been coaching Lego League even before junior high, so she's got a lot of experience in that and will do, do well as a coach.
That's neat.
The legal recruiting process.
So these are all programs that they've demonstrated student interest. So they have to run at least a full year with enough student interest for us to make them into a supplemental and paid position. So kudos to these folks for being willing to take that and allow the students to have the opportunity and then pursue this as an ally and create supplement.
The junior high football team will challenge us to do a match like the high school bid, will they? I hate to lose the junior high kids, but I will.
Can I assume that meant you lost to the high school kids?
Even with cheating, we lost. Sister Becker was cheating for us, so.
This is being recorded, you know.
Yeah, that's why, yeah. It still wasn't close.
That's great. They probably loved that.
I have a question about the Van Cleve, that presentation. When did that start, where they started implementing this in the sixth-grade building, encouraging the students to do extracurricular activities?
I think last year is Maurice's first year, and I think that he had that focus last year as well.
Okay.
When he transitioned from Haywood to Van Cleve Building, I think he took that upon himself to push that agenda pretty strongly, and I think it's working.
And he developed those partnerships that they have at the end of the school year, which are fantastic.
Some existed, but he certainly expanded them.
Well, like I said, the freshmen that came in this year are extraordinary. They signed up for all these activities, sports, extra, all the things that they're doing. And I was wondering how long this had been in place, if maybe that had made an impact, or if this was something new.
I think his push for that has certainly made an impact.
How long has Mr. Sadler been in the sixth-grade building?
At Van Cleve?
I'm sorry, Van Cleve.
Yeah, you too. This is your two.
It's the twenty-second, okay.
He was at Haywood for years before that.
Oh, I know.
This is Deidre Howard, the freshman building. That's Mrs. Davis.
That's what we were talking about, how awesome they are. And I was just wondering if this program had maybe been a result of that.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I can't say, but I will say that I think in general, our, in our strategic plan previously, we, it was a push across the board for kids to be involved. So I think that we collectively have just been kind of making sure that kids know what else is out there and been making an effort, like we even mentioned, the fifth grade, when they, we bring them to the high school to see the band, they put on a performance, and just getting the kids exposure to some things that are new and out there. And a lot of the elementaries now have their own student councils, so students understand what that is before they get to that middle school level. And then it really starts to ramp up in some of those situations. So I think collectively, I've seen it across the board in all of our buildings that have been trying to, you know, involve kids more in the day-to-day operations of the building and make them feel that sense of responsibility to give back and get involved. So I think we're seeing that now.
You're teaching the leadership skills younger versus, hey, you're in high school, time to grow up, here's all these activities, figure out what you want to do.
They're not afraid to sign up. Like I said, if that freshman focuses.
They're ready.
By those tables and then just lists of kids with, that wrote their names down for all kinds of, and I've had some parents come up. They said, I don't know, my kids said they're in like three D clubs, so great. And you know, I have no idea what they are, but my kid's going to do them.
That's great.
That's what we want, you know, just get out there and try and, and just, you know, be part of something and meet new people and so.
That's great.
There's clearly a very strong correlation to kids being involved and engaged in after-school activities and in-school activities to lower behavioral issues, better academic progress. We know that's very clear, so we want the kids to feel like they're connected and engaged with our school in different ways.
Within your notice there, and Mr. Sadler mentioned that the strategic plan mentions grades seven through twelve, a hundred percent of students, and he doesn't have any of those students. He only has sixth grade. But even back when he was at Haywood, I remember when I was at the high school, us having conversations of him saying, we have to find a way to start this sooner. So he mentioned it tonight, and I know he doesn't like to take a lot of praise, but praise is definitely deserved because in the two years, I've seen him be very proactive in trying to find ways to get students involved.
Well, he was always...
He's directly involved with what's happening at the high school. I don't think, not quite yet, because he hasn't had the time, but I think it...
Yeah. He was like that at Haywood, I remember. My kids were there. He was always very interactive and knew things, I mean, under the control that he had, but it's perfect for him.
Yeah, and when we go to five, six, and it starts earlier, it's just nothing but goodness. That's wonderful. Will you please call the roll, Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Next, we have the second hearing of the public for anything not on the agenda. Thing there. Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mrs. Packard and Mrs. Davis. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for your time here.